Thank you, recording. For your life.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the June 3, 2020 meeting to level in the City Council order. City Manager Mahalan, would you like to start off with our standard spiel?
Yes, in accordance with provisions of our San 91A, emergency control issued by the government state of Hampshire, this meeting is being conducted virtually due to the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic that affects our state and our community and our country. Therefore, the public is not allowed to physically be in the room, and the councilors other than the two that are present are operating remotely for the best interest of their health and the health of others. If you are participating by phone, if you wish to speak, dot star six amount of volume speak. The mayor will recognize and allow for public comment at the appropriate times. We will pause. It takes some about 20 seconds for it to allow you to speak. We'll make sure that we pause the line and I have to do that. We do encourage people to speak again, but if you're on the phone, dial star six and that will allow you to speak. Thank you very much. Councilor Rauner, please. Please.
Yeah. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the states of America, to the republic which stands unbidden under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you. I think we take a little bit of a roll call here. I know that Councilor Hooning will not be with us tonight. Councilor Rauner and I are here in the chambers. I see Council Heistin, Council Sykes, Council Hill, Council Prentice, Council Belo invited. Do I see councilors look anywhere? Okay, she may join us later. So, folks and for those in the audience, before we start our meeting tonight, I believe that it is both appropriate and is necessary to acknowledge the extremely painful events that have rocked our country over the past nine days. The horrific death of George Floyd at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer is, to put it quite simply, a national disgrace. It is yet, in my opinion, another example of the stain of racial inequity that has haunted our nation for what is now hundreds of years. The protests that have followed the killing of Mr. Floyd show clearly that we must do, that we must all do our best to end racism and racial inequality once and for all. With that goal in mind, I would like to offer a moment of silence, both in the memory of Mr. Floyd and for all those who have similarly suffered over the years, and with the hope that we can finally work together to create a country where liberty and justice for all is a reality and not an aspiration. So if we can all just take a moment now, just to reflect on the last nine days, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much for indulging me in that. Okay, our public forum announcement, which I make at every meeting, any member of the public who desires to speak on any item may do so when the item is taken up by the council, and you'll be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. We ask you to state your name, if you live in Lebanon, your ward of residence. We also kick off our meetings, every meeting, with a short period of time where we open it up to the public for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone who has an item that's not on tonight's agenda that they'd like to speak to for up to three minutes, please either call in or ask to be recognized, and we'll recognize you.
Mayor McNamara?
Yes, Councilor Hill.
Thank you, it's Councilor Hill. I appreciate that you started our meeting with the moment of silence and the recognition. I wanted to also thank our police chief, Richard Mello, for his, for the statement that he issued on behalf of Lebanon PD. I thought it was very appropriate and a strong message. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on with the meeting then. Our first item tonight, on tonight's agenda, is a recognition of a retirement here in the city, and this is a resolution honoring Mike Hammond. Whereas Mike Hammond has devoted himself to a career in public service, having served in Lebanon Public Works Department for 37 years, and whereas Mike began his service to the city on December 19, 1983, in the Department of Public Works Operations and Maintenance Group as a truck driver and backhoe operator, and whereas on November 23, 2003, Mike was promoted to Public Works Team Leader, which in 2006 was renamed the Operations and Maintenance Group Superintendent, and he has remained in this position until his retirement date of June 1, 2020, and whereas Mike has served in the Public Works Department over the past 37 years in courteous and helpful manner, often going above and beyond his duties to assist the department whenever needed, and whereas Mike has earned the respect, the confidence, and the friendship of his fellow coworkers, the business associates he has come into contact with, as well as the many citizens he has served for the past 37 years, and whereas Mike has demonstrated during his employment with the city those many attributes that were essential to his position, including earning the distinction of senior Rhodes Scholar status for the UNH technology center, and continually giving up himself freely and selfishly. Therefore, being resolved that we, the members of the Lebanon City Council, on behalf of the citizenry of Lebanon, Mike's friends, fellow employees and associates, express our admiration of and respect for the career of our outstanding and faithful employee, and extend to him our sincere gratitude and wish him well in his retirement. We get further resolved that this resolution be written upon the minutes of the Lebanon City Council meeting and a copy presented to Mike Hammond, dated this third day of June 2020, Lebanon, New Hampshire, Timothy J. McNamara, Mayor, on behalf of the Lebanon City Council. Thank you, Mike. Our next item is acceptance of a couple of sets of minutes. These are the minutes for our May 13, 2020 special meeting and our May 2020 regular meeting. I would entertain a motion on these minutes. Yes, Council Prentice.
Still moved.
Council Prentice moves the minutes be approved, I take it, as written?
As written, and for both the special meeting on May 13 and the regular meeting on May 20.
Thank you. Okay, Council Rauner, seconds. Is there any discussion or any corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Council Heistin? Council Heistin, you're muted. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye. That mute button won't get me yet.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Council Hill?
Hill votes yea.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, and I still don't see Council Zook, so that makes it unanimous of the folks present. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is appointments.
Uh, Mr. Kipps?
Oh, hi, Council Zook, how are you?
Hi, sorry about the lateness. My internet connection was not.
No worries, we're just getting started. I'm just moving on to appointments. Let me get to that page. We have one this evening. This is a reappointment of Joe Clifford to the Arts and Culture Commission, and he was interviewed by Council Heistin. Council Heistin, would you like to speak to this reappointment? You're muted again.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Joe has been on the commission and has been a very active member of it, and being the coordinator-director for the Opera House is very involved with performing arts in New Hampshire, and I feel brings a wealth of information and expertise to the, to the council, so I recommend him highly.
Thank you very much. Would you like to nominate?
Yes, I would.
Would someone like to second that nomination? Council Prentice seconds the nomination. This is the reappointment of Joe Clifford to the arts, as an arts organization representative member of the Arts and Culture Commission. Any other comments on this reappointment nomination, councilors? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Council Heistin?
Heistin votes aye.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Council Prentice votes yes.
Council Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Councilor Zook?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Zook. Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, that makes it unanimous of the eight members present. Thank you very much. Okay, we will start our public hearing items for the evening, and we have several of them this evening. And the first one is amendment, an amendment to ordinance number 18 salary plan, Article 2, non-affiliated employees to include the positions of technical, excuse me, technical advisor 1 and 2 and general intern 1 and 2. Just staff on the presentation.
Yes, HR Director Leskovic, if you would provide the presentation.
Certainly. Good evening, this is Gloria Leskovic, HR Director for the City of Lebanon. I, good evening, Mayor McNamara and City Councilors. I'm here tonight before the City Council to acknowledge the third reading to amend ordinance number 18 salary plan, Article 2, to include the positions of technical advisor 1 and 2 and general intern 1 and 2, and to take action to adopt these changes. I don't, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Gloria? We've had this presentation several times now. Yes, Council Sykes?
You're muted.
You're muted, George.
Yeah, you're still muted.
Yeah, why does it keep muting? I don't do it.
It's the huge ghost.
My question for the, for the HR Director is, if these positions, which are envisioned to be temporary and part-time or temporary full-time, were to transition to full-time, would that come before the council at all?
No. Well, the City Manager just answered no.
Yeah, I, I heard this, so now I have a que, okay, so I, I guess I'm struggling a tiny bit with if the technical advisor positions were to go to full-time, not temporary, why would they not be in one of the bargaining units?
Well, they're not permanent employees, first of all, so they wouldn't qualify for that.
I understood that, but that's, the premise of my question was, Mr. Manager, was if they did become permanent.
Well, then, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't fit in this category any longer. They would fall into one of our other categories. These are, these are temporary positions where they're full, part-time, they're not, they're not permanent, and you know, obviously, we have to meet NHRS requirements and all that, so they're not intended for that purpose. They're really intended for, for instance, Sandy Allison example, we're gonna bring her back to help us out with the elections, she's probably gonna help us out with the records management system, but she has the expertise on that, but that's gonna be sporadic and I wouldn't even call it part-time. I'm trying to think, I, I guess the better example in the case of the intern, we have an intern working over at DPW, I had one last year as well, and she's doing fixed asset management work, she'll, she'll work for a set period of time, so she won't qualify for any, any retirement system benefits, pension benefits, or health insurance, or any of those other sorts of things. That's really what they're intended for.
So I guess what you're saying is, what I understand you to be saying is that, well, these could be full-time temporary positions, they do not transition to a permanent position.
Yeah, I, I guess, well, if, if they could, then they would go to a different job position. Let's say they, something happened, and I get sick, and I was out for eight months. You had an interim city manager, you would hire them under this category, probably a technical advisor, if you wanted to hire an actual employee, and they would stay in that category for whatever period of time is necessary for our return back to work. I guess that, that would be an example of that. Yeah.
Could, could I just add one thing as well? Most of our, well, all of our collective bargaining units do not have part-time employees in them additionally. That would be something that I think would have to be negotiated to accept part-time people.
Well, I, I understood that, that's why, again, I'm, the premise of my question was if they're, if they were to change to temporary, from temporary and/or part-time to a permanent position, would that come before the City Council?
No.
So the manager's telling me no, so I guess I'll just have to, and then that brought forth the question of if that were to happen, so it doesn't sound like that's the intent, and I accept that on face value.
Just to be clear, there's only one position that the council authorized, and that's mine. The number of positions throughout the city isn't set by the council.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, just so you know.
Yeah, I, I understand that, Mr. Manager, thank you. So I think, go ahead, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm done for the moment.
Council Prentice?
So I, I just wanna follow up on Council Sykes's question and for further clarification. So temporary versus permanent, not the part-time piece, if they become permanent, doesn't come before us, but would they be eligible at that point, did they become part of the collective bargaining unit?
I suppose if they, they were to fit into the category, I don't, none of those, none of them would fit in any of the category, firefighter or police officer, right, because those are actually positions that are defined. We worked, I give you an example, we, we did have a person that was helping us out with the predation PD that we were paying, so that's an example, that was a temporary position, that person was working there, so they don't, these are not permanent positions.
I understand that, it's if it makes the, sorry, if it makes the transition, I'll yield back to Councilor Sykes, I was trying to help out there.
Yes, Council Sykes?
Thank you. So, one of the reasons why I asked for the job descriptions earlier was because I wanted to read them for myself to, to get a better understanding of what these types of jobs were, and my, to be more specific about my concern, was that the technical advisors, the ones that are grade 11 or even grade 16, if they were to become permanent, the way I read the job description, I was concerned that they might more properly belong in la paz, the purpose of la paz being professional, salaried, non-department head persons, and that's the only reason why I'm bringing up the question, so that that's, we have that in front of us if that eventuality were to take place.
Yeah, again, these are not permanent positions, they're either part-time or temporarily full-time, so it spells that out, says it in there, so I don't know.
So, Mayor McNamara, can I jump in? I might be able to help out a little bit.
Yes, Paula.
Okay, so if these positions did end up becoming permanent, full-time, eligible for benefits, and part of that portion of the salary plan, if the unions, for some reason, feel like there's a community of interest, and they approach the city and say, now that these are permanent and we want to make them part of the union, and they are successful, then it would come back before the council, because we would have to move them, or you would have to move them, from the non-affiliated compensation schedule to a collective bargaining schedule, compensation schedule. Whether or not, you know, at that point, there's discussion about, you know, should they, can they, it would just be, they would go from the non-affiliated to a bargaining unit.
Yeah, well, something, thank you, Paula, something like that is, it is possible for that kind of movement to happen via negotiation between the bargaining unit and the city manager, having participated in those very kinds of discussions in a previous role. So I just, I wanted a better understanding, I appreciate you all trying to answer these questions for me.
Anyone else? Let me read the motion. Well, I do have to say, this, this is a public hearing, so I will now, before we take a motion, open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, please make a motion. Movement of the Lebanon City Council to acknowledge the third of three presentations to amend ordinance number 18 salary plan, Article 2, by adding the position of technical advisor 1, grade 11, technical advisor 2, grade 16, and general intern 2, grade 1, and the seasonal temporary position of general intern 1 to the non-affiliated compensation classification scheduled as follows, I'm not sure how many more pages it is, but as follows the following presentation, 40 through, 40 through 42, as follows, page 40, 242. Would someone like to second that motion? Council Prentice seconds. Any further questions, councilors? Okay, we'll take a voice vote. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yea.
Yeah, thank you. Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Thank you, and Mayor McNamara votes yes, that's unanimous. Second public hearing item tonight is, let me go to it. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend City Code Chapter 68 fees, Article 3, miscellaneous fees, section 68-15, enumeration of fees, including storm order application fee. City Council has scheduled this public hearing in our May 6, 2020 meeting, public hearing is properly noticing the values on May 20, 23, 2020, in accordance with the City Code and the state law. City Manager Mahalan, please make your presentation.
So the purpose is that the city does not presently have an application to tie in the city's storm drain system. Since I've been here, there's, there's been two agreements that are written up, because there is no permit process to allow people to do that. This will establish a fee, like all the other fees, like tying in the city sewer system or water system, in this case, it'll be a fee of $250, and that includes inspections and everything else that we do for any connection to our storm drain system, and we'll talk about the next item about the storm order permit process that we put into the code as well, but that's what that fee is for, is to offset our costs. Right now, the taxpayers in general are paying for those private entities that tie into our storm drain system, and this will appropriately allocate that cost to those who are actually.
Councilors, any questions on this before I open the public hearing? Hearing now, I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this proposal? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Have you heard no council comments? Would someone like to make a motion? Yes, Council Rauner?
Movement of the Lebanon City Council hereby adopt the ordinance number 2020-08 to amend City Council Chapter 68 fees, Article 3, Section 68-15, enumeration of fees to include a storm order permit application fee.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that motion?
Prentice seconds.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes seconds the motion.
Council Sykes seconds the motion. Councilors, any further discussion? Very well, we'll call a voice vote on this then. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Council Hill?
Council Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Council Prentice?
Council Prentice votes yes.
Thank you. Council Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes for that, and it's also unanimous. Thank you. That finishes up new business for tonight, so we'll go to old business, and the first item under old business, business, is ordinance number 2020-07, and this is an item to reschedule the public hearing for this to July 1, 2020. Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, the reason why Bernie was doing his legal analysis, we want to add a couple more definitions, and he wants to change a little bit of the language in there, I want to give him time to which to do that, so we're asking that you allow for that, reschedule that public hearing, that should give us enough time to get all that done for you.
Would someone like to make a motion to reschedule? Yes. Assistant Mayor Belo?
I will move that the Lebanon City Council hereby reschedules the public hearing for proposed ordinance number 2000, or 2020-07, to repeal and replace City Code Chapter 124, use of public storm order system, to Wednesday, July 1, 2020, beginning at 7 o'clock PM, remote via Microsoft Teams.
Thank you. Would someone like to second the motion?
Heistin will second.
Heistin seconds. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Council Heistin?
Yeah, Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Council Prentice votes yes.
Council Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, that's also unanimous. That brings us to our second item of old business, which is the New Hampshire Municipal Association Legislative Policy Process, and I think we have at least three items to discuss here. Do you want to have Assistant Mayor Belo discuss the first one? Assistant Mayor Belo, would you like to discuss the first one, please?
Sure. When the City Manager Mahalan first brought this up, I said that I thought Leac would be interested in working on a energy, climate, and sustainability policy, so that's what we have, and maybe I'll just read through it real quick, because it kind of speaks for itself on.
Yes, please.
Page 55 of the council agenda, and, and so Leac, we took this up at our April meeting and discussed it some, and further worked on it between them, and in May, Leac unanimously voted to recommend that we propose this to NHMA. So it says, NHMA supports legislation and state policies that preserve and enhance municipal energy, climate, and sustainability, planning, policies, and actions for their communities. In particular, NHMA supports the ability of municipalities to enact measures that promote local energy and land use systems that are both economically and environmentally sustainable over the long term, protect and preserve local natural resources and public infrastructure, build community resilience, and foster adaptation to climate change and mitigate its risk. NHMA encourages policies that support customer and community choice in energy supply and use, and use competitive market-based mechanisms, promote cost effectiveness, sustainability, and innovation. So there, there's a lot there, but we thought it, you know, the, I think the idea that Manager Mahalan said NHMA is looking for is some broad overall encompassing policy statements, and then sort of iterate the more specific things that have traditionally been in the NHMA policy. So I guess I could answer questions on it. I, you know, I think it is crafted to sort of be broad- You know, I think it is crafted to sort of be broadly acceptable by different municipal officials with different perspectives on some of these issues. There it is.
Councilors, do you have any questions on this proposed language?
This is Karen. I have a question.
Yes, Council Hill.
Council Belo, you have advocated on behalf of the city on a number of energy-related issues over the last couple of years. Would this proposed policy for the municipal association have allowed the municipal association lobbyists to join you in supporting the different legislation that you have been working on? Would, and I don't know whether they did or didn't, but would this have authorized them, you know, in the absence of something specific? Would this language be broad enough or end specific enough to have enabled them to collaborate with you on providing testimony with regard to the initiatives that you have been involved in so far?
Well, not surprisingly, a number of those initiatives are ones that NHMA could support within their current policies. Some of them somewhat tappidly, because it wasn't really clear how it fit, but, so their support has been, on some of the bills, has been somewhat tappid. And there's a few bills that they just haven't weighed in on that might have been helpful that, you know, for instance, the town of Hanover did weigh in on at one point, but not NHMA. So there are, I think, I think this gives a broader sort of umbrella and rubric that is really about empowering communities to be proactive, because it's sort of, this is where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. When we have extreme weather events, we're the ones who have the infrastructure cost for, you know, first response in the pandemic, which has to do with sustainability. Yeah. So yes, I think it would be helpful, but I'm not sure I was thinking it specifically in those terms, but more broadly, the whole landscape of legislation that comes before.
To Council Hill's point, though, that's exactly what these policy positions are designed to do, to give staff that guidance to be able to advocate on these bills and not have to go back to the board of directors every time. So to Council Hill's point, that's exactly what this does, and the way that Assistant Mayor Belo has detailed that, it does give them a lot more teeth to go back and say, yeah, we do support that. The legislative policy, Congress has approved all of that on behalf of all the towns, so it does give them a lot more teeth to do just that. So from my perspective, I think this is extremely well done and comprehensive, and I think it will give the NHMA the ability to confidently move forward with supporting this type of legislation when it comes up. And, you know, we know that a lot of times, these things either pass or fail by the skin of their teeth, and I'm thinking of a number of the solar initiatives that have come through. So anything we can do is positive, and I think this gives the NHMA a lot of latitude, which seems good to me, for what it's worth. Yes, Council Sykes?
Are we, are we ready for a motion?
Well, we can do this one of two ways. We can vote on these individually, or we can listen to, I think there's three total, and we can look at them as a group. I'm happy to vote on them individually, if you'd like to make a motion on this one.
Yeah, I was, I was willing to make a motion on this one, and I don't think it'll take that much longer to do each three.
Why don't you do so then?
So with that in mind, I hope I have the right motion in front of me on the other screen. Move that the Lebanon City Council supports the recommendation of LIAC for submission of a policy on energy, climate, and sustainability, as provided in the June third, twenty twenty City Council Agenda Packet, and directs the city manager to submit a policy proposal form to the NHMA for consideration at the Fall Policy Conference.
Thank you very much. We have a second for that?
Hill will second.
Council Prentice seconds. I have lots of seconds. We'll grab for Council Prentice without, Council Prentice seconds. So let's take a vote on that. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Brawn? Brawn votes yes. Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Assistant Mayor Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McMurdo votes yes, so that one's unanimous. Who would like to present on the second item? I don't know if you have actually got those, I think there was an error, those didn't get sent out to initiative, the other two, economic development and.
Yeah, they're in the packet, it's just that I had this long insert in between, which probably nobody got through. After this declaration on energy choice and competition, it, those other ones follow in the council packet as.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, right.
Right. So there's one on economic development, and then there's one on substance abuse. Let's talk about the one on economic development first. So the reason why these are here is these didn't get added to the roster that the committees are considering right now, and they were supposed to be, so that was an error that was made, so some community has to advocate for them. And I'm the chairman of the board for NHMA, so I distracted these out real quick. They're going to get changed, I have the economic development director in Nashville is helping me, he'll add some material to the economic development piece, but this is just a basic one, to get something before the committee reconsider. And I think that's going to go to yours, Assistant Mayor Belo, your committee, I believe, is what I've been told, that's going to be assigned to your committee.
I did volunteer for the committee that also take up the energy policy, so yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I had a couple suggestions, I like it, but I thought that in light of the current economic situation, we might add a little emphasis on, like in the first sentence where it says, which, which should probably be that, but foster economic development that allows for preservation and creation of jobs and vitality within our communities. And then, and in the bullet points where it says.
Hang on, preservation and creation of jobs? Yeah.
Maybe it would be helpful for the audience, anybody who listens to this who hasn't read it, to just read through it. I'll just read through it and point out a few little tweaks I'd like to suggest. NHMA supports allowing local government authority to implement measures to foster economic development, and it reads currently, which allows for creation of jobs, and I'm suggesting to say, that allows for preservation, or allows for the preservation and creation of jobs and vitality within our communities. Then it says NHMA supports, and there's two bullet points. First bullet point, legislation that allows for local adoption of more options and more flexibility to provide incentives for economic development. And I kind of wonder, you know, a lot of people, like even at federal level, are saying that recovery might take a decade at this point. If maybe we should say to provide incentives for economic recovery and development. I don't know. Well, just because development seems like, you know, like we've got to recover first and preserve what we have. And expansion and more flexibility of state tax credit exemption programs to foster economic development. And again, I'd say foster economic recovery, development, and vitality. And then it says NHMA opposes, two bullet points, legislation that makes it more burdensome to implement economic development measures, I'd say economic recovery and development measures, and CDFA, second bullet, CDFA administrative rules that are overly complicated and unnecessarily difficult to work through. I mean, I don't feel real strongly, but it just seems like, at this point, we need these tools for economic recovery as well, even more than for the new development and preserving recovery of our vitality.
So councilors, again, what we do is just sort of kicking this off, putting a placeholder in there that would then be built upon by the NHMA. So this probably is not the end-all, the be-all, but at least it's a place to start. I would argue that I think that it's great with the changes that Assistant Mayor Belo has suggested here, given the current situation that we're in. I don't think it's unduly specific, but it allows NHMA to build upon this proposition. Anyone else have any comments on this one? I just added those pieces he discussed for. Okay.
Good. Yeah, I'm supportive of the changes as well.
Assistant Mayor Belo, would you like to take a stab at a motion on this one?
Me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going back to the previous question. I move that the Lebanon City Council supports, let me see, supports the, supports the recommendation of an economic development and vitality policy for submission to NHMA, as discussed, as provided in our June third, twenty twenty packet, and discussed at this meeting. Also, I guess, subject to some tweaks from Nashville's development director, if that comes through in the next few days. And directs the city manager to submit a policy proposal form to the NHMA for consideration at the Fall Policy Conference.
Would someone like to second that? Council Prentice seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, Council Heistin?
Heistin votes aye.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Brawn? Brawn votes yes. Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McMurdo votes yes, that's unanimous. The third and last one we have tonight, I'll ask the city manager to bring this one up as well, relates to substance abuse prevention and response. So both these actually came up with a meeting that Mayor and I both attended in Nashville, a meeting of mayors, in regards to, NHMA had very narrowly focused policy positions, there are quite a few of them, and they really weren't dealing with the big issues that municipalities are facing, and this was clearly one of those, there was, NHMA never had a policy position on it, and the opioid crisis obviously has been very dramatic to towns of all size in our cities. So this is one of those that was talked about, and therefore, it was, again, was not added into the list that went to the committees this last week, or the week before, I should say. So I drafted up one to make sure that this does get included, this will probably go to my subcommittee to work on, and this, again, is a very general category. But NHMA, they've traditionally not weighed in on these bills that come from legislation that apply to this, and obviously, there are huge issues for our municipalities. So therefore, this is what I drafted, as you can see here. Does anyone have any problems or comments regarding this language?
I thought it was great, and I'd be happy to read a motion, and just go ahead and read the text into the record, because I think it's.
Please do.
I'll move that we direct the city manager to submit a policy proposal form to the NHMA for consideration at the Fall Policy Conference for the substance abuse prevention and response policy as presented in the, in council agenda packet for this June third, twenty twenty meeting, reading as follows, and I'm just going to go to the correct page.
Page sixty-one.
Yeah, yeah. There we go. Okay. Substance abuse prevention and response. NHMA supports programs to address substance abuse and response to the substance issues to include treatment and recovery programs. NHMA supports state funding to address substance abuse for the following efforts: prevention, treatment, recovery, enforcement. Legislation supports prevention, treatment, recovery, and enforcement efforts. NHMA opposes reductions in state funding for substance abuse programs. Legislation that makes it more difficult to address the substance abuse problem in our communities.
Thank you, Council Belo. Would someone second that motion?
Heistin will second.
Council Heistin seconds. There's no further questions, we'll take a vote. Council Heistin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just, like, briefly to this. I appreciate this coming forward, you know, I think it's long overdue. When, you know, when I first lived in Lebanon, I worked at the headrest hotline, I did overnight shifts there, and ended up, when I was serving in the Senate, able to help shepherd through legislation, for the first time ever sought to dedicate a portion of the growth and profits from the sale of alcohol for prevention and treatment and recovery from alcohol and substance abuse. It was the first time the state had ever tried to dedicate part of the profits that it makes from selling addictive substances to that prevention and treatment. And it was never really fully funded, although in more recent years, there have been efforts to do that. So I really appreciate this policy coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll all vote. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Council Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Brawn? Brawn votes yes. Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
And Mayor McMurdo votes yes, this one is also unanimous. Thank you very much for that, folks. New business, we have two items. The first is discussion and setting a public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty. This is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine to amend City Code Chapter sixty-eight fees, Article three miscellaneous fees, section sixty-eight dash fifteen enumeration of fees to allow exemptions of the fixed charge for three-quarter inch and one-inch water meters serving fire suppression systems in one and two family residential units. As you recall, this is something we asked the staff to bring back to us, following some correspondence we had from constituents with regard to folks who had fire suppression systems in their one and two family residential dwelling units, in conformance of NFPA thirteen D. Is that correct? Correct, Council Sykes?
Yes, it's thirteen D.
Thirteen D, thank you.
D for domestic.
Yes, D for domestic. Would you like to speak to that? This makes the amendments that were talked about, Assistant Mayor Belo wants to talk about a slight change to, okay, the language we discussed this morning, I'll let him do that. Would you like to talk to that, Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes, I'm just trying to come back online here.
Okay.
Turning on the light. Yes, on page sixty-nine of the council packet, I, we just say, you know, the presentation of this and the ordinance itself says it's to exempt the fixed charge for three-quarter and one-inch meters serving fire suppression systems in one and two family residential dwelling units. But further down on that page, in the, in the, there's a red footnote, and in the footnote, it's just, it's sort of an explanation of what's going on, in terms of allowing people who have larger meters than they would otherwise have, less than being charged what they would otherwise have, which is a five-eighths inch water meter, which is what most residential dwelling units have. As such, those one and two family residential dwelling serviced by a previously installed fire suppression system may be exempt from the requirement to pay a higher fixed meter charge. So rather than, I'd like to see us delete, as we send this for a public hearing, the words "previously installed," so just read "serviced by a fire suppression system." We don't discourage people from putting these in the future with this higher meter charge, when they don't actually use the capacity in the water system or the sewer system, you know, except, I guess, when there's a fire, but, you know, we want to encourage people to have these, if it otherwise makes sense for them to do so.
So it's my understanding that a limited number of these are going in currently, but certainly. um, certainly we don't want to treat people who choose to install these at this point differently from people who are previously installed. So I think, given the relatively small numbers involved, in my mind anyway, it makes sense to eliminate the word "previously."
I, I agree with that totally.
Okay, so bear in mind that what we're doing now is to basically just have an initial discussion to see if we generally agree with how staff has dealt with this in our request, and then to set a public hearing for two weeks from now. Does anyone have any other questions? Is anyone unhappy with how this has been crafted? I certainly think it takes care of the situation. Can we just get a consensus if that's the case, because we'll change the language to ask and post the changed language? So can we get, can we get a consensus that this language with previously removed is fine? Does anyone disagree with that? Yes, Council Heistin?
I just want, we spoke of it at last time when we, we addressed this, but I just wanted to make sure that this is retroactive to any charges which have been assessed against these parties that already have assessed systems in.
I believe that is the case, that the city manager does not know. Well, yeah, right, it's not retroactive, but you're, you're gonna tell me you want me to do that, and that, that, that's what I'll do, I'm gonna bait those. Right. Like we talked about the last time, it, it won't be retroactive per se, but you'll just tell me that's what you want me to do, and then I'm gonna bait those, which I have the authority to do under the code. Once the day we do that, that's when I'll do that. So I think that's all our understanding here.
I just don't wanna see people charged with something that was really our problem and not theirs.
Yeah, we just, once, we have that, the hearing on that date, when you pass this, something you knew, then you'll just ask me to do that, and it's on the record, and it's, it's clear for me to just go back and bait all those from the previous quarter, and those that have occurred in the second quarter, so. Would someone like to make a motion to set the public hearing? Yes, Council Sykes, please.
So I move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020 dash zero nine to amend the City Code, the Code of the City of Lebanon, Chapter 68, Fees, Article III Miscellaneous Fees, Section 68 dash fifteen enumeration of fees, to exempt the fixed charge for three-quarter inch and one-inch water meters serving one and two family residential dwelling units that contain a fire suppression system.
Someone second that? Council Prentice seconds?
Yes.
Okay, call void, a voice vote. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Council Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Roderick?
Roderick votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Mayor McNamara votes yes, it's unanimous we set the public hearing for the 17th of June. Okay, that brings us to the last.
Mayor McNamara, before you move on, Mayor McNamara? Um, is it, is it possible for, um, the city manager's office, or, or will someone be in touch with, I think it was two people in particular who came and testified at the last meeting, is that, um, I just wanna make it clear who will be responsible to let the people know that, that we did this?
Well, we'll send it out with the bills, that's how we'll do it, it's the best way to do it, that way nobody gets missed, and we'll, we're just gonna send it out to everybody just in case there's somebody out there that we don't know about, and there's no sense taking a risk here, so we'll put it out right when that bill goes out.
Okay, thank you.
And with the instructions as to what to do, and by then you will advise me to bait those, and we'll, we'll provide instruction on that, so it'll be probably detailed later, and we'll also have it on our website, too. Okay, the last regular item on our agenda tonight is 2021 budget guidance. In preparation for the FY 2021 budget process, information is compiled, then compiled, for the council's review relative to planned tax rate increases and their associated impacts, and city manager Mahal has provided us with a memo in our packet, and I would ask him to please address that. So actually, I have some good news, which I don't always get to deliver, so I'd prefer to do that whenever I get that chance. So the revenues other than property taxes for, through May are actually up by four percent overall, which we didn't really expect that that would be the case, so that's the good news. But there are some within that that are down, like Motivico was down 11%, uh, but like I said, across the board, we're still, uh, uh, four percent, but that's really good news. The other good piece of news is that when we put the budget, every year we put the budgets together, we anticipate a half a percent of growth in the tax base of the city. Uh, it was looking like, uh, a few weeks ago, it was gonna be about point six seven, obviously above the half a percent, but as of Friday, when we included all of the pickups for the, uh, April fourth, uh, April first deadline, we're actually at 1.7%. That's probably one of the highest growth rates in a long time, and that's more than three times what we had originally anticipated when we put the 2020 budget together, so that's really, really good news. Uh, so I wanted to pass that on in light of all the other less than good news that we've all been dealing with lately and around us. Uh, so there's that. So I put this memo together, and even some of the information here has actually changed since, uh, Friday, uh, in terms of, uh, the TIF analysis, I talked, I just wanna get down to that real quick, and then I'll jump back. Uh, it's on the second page, uh, it talks about, it's the, let's see, I have the third paragraph down, the, uh, the issue with the TIF district, and actually we're a much better spot than what we originally anticipated because of the pickups that we, uh, finally calculated on Friday. With GeoCon in particular, it's a three, three million dollar add to the property in the TIF district, so that's really good news, and that reduces what I refer to as the, the hole in our general fund revenues, where we're initially estimating a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and now it's gonna be close to fifty-five thousand dollars, which is, once again, good news. So there's real growth in the TIF district that'll be going into that, but there is some artificial growth that we anticipate from the change in the assessed values which will occur in the fall tax bill. So it's, it's a much smaller situation than originally projected, about fifty-five thousand, but we still have to wait to see what the actual assessments are for the fall, and we'll know that till September 1st. So now that we've got that, I wanna bounce back, uh, to the top. Since I've been here, and I believe you've done this for quite some time, usually after we do the workshops or the annual outcomes, the council issues some guidance in regards to how the budget, uh, should be prepared, what the council is looking for. And as you know, it's my responsibility to produce a budget to the council by a certain date, by the end of October, and then, of course, it's up to you to pass a budget by the end of the year, uh, otherwise the city manager's budget, it becomes the default budget. We, one of the things where we didn't have a whole lot of good data the last time we talked, we have some better data, but not enough data in order for you, I would suggest, to make a decision. It's up to you to give issue guidance anytime that you wish to do so. Even though it doesn't say on charter, the idea is, the, the city manager's supposed to produce a budget, and you're supposed to act on it sometime in the fall after October. But the real concept, even though it doesn't say that, is we're supposed to work together to come to develop a budget and make it, make it work for the city, and the more time that we work collectively to get that done, the better off we are. Someone needs to issue guidance to the Department of Energy, and of course, that is my responsibility under the charter, and I plan on doing that tomorrow. Right now, the, the tax bill, people should be getting them in the mail today, the first half tax bill, so we won't know what the status of how many, how many of those are gonna be paid till sometime in July. They're due July, around July 1st. It's gonna be probably another week after that before we can really assess where we're at. We do have a assessment of the water bills, and Vicki, do you wanna talk about that for the first quarter water bills?
First quarter water bills, we've did about, we have about ninety-three percent people that have paid, which is about what we get every year, and we have had no one come in and ask for a payment plan.
And when were those due?
Those were due, uh, June 1st.
Okay, so, uh, we, then there's another piece of information which we didn't have before, but the big, I think the big task would be to see what the outcome is of those, that first property tax bill, see how many actually come in compared to the previous year. And then the other thing I, I talked about in the memo is what the status is of this, uh, stimulus bill that's in front of Congress right now that has passed the House, is in the hands of the Senate, and the conventional wisdom is that people think that somehow it will be resolved one way or the other by the end of June, that remains to be seen, of course, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that. The governor's thought about that two weeks ago, and we were on the, the mayor's conference call with him, is that there would be some resolution in that, but it wouldn't be a three trillion dollar bill, and as it, as it is presently, there'll be some sort of compromise agreement, but that's, of course, based on his, his guess, too, that he doesn't have a magic crystal ball like the rest of us. He did say a couple of weeks ago, which I found somewhat encouraging, that he told the mayor, you don't, you don't have to worry about the rooms and bills tax, you will get the amount of money that has been planned for you. Uh, he doesn't actually get to make that decision, at the end of the day, that really is that the, uh, the fiscal committee of the House and the Senate will ultimately decide how that, how that works out, depending on how the parties come in. But that's what he said, he was pretty strong about his statement on that. He didn't say anything about the gas tax money, uh, or the revenue sharing amount, that twenty million dollars that has been appropriated for this year for the first time, we haven't seen that in about ten years. So it remains to be seen what's gonna happen with those. So this is another piece of information, but I think there's two key pieces of information that you don't have enough data on right now, I would suggest to you to make a decision. My suggestion is that you wait before you do that, and of course, it's totally up to you, and anytime you provide advice, we'll act on that, take your advice. My plan is to submit a budget, uh, in, in line with the city's long-term financial plan that we've been working on for years, and that's what I plan on, and that's the guidance that will go to Department of Energy tomorrow, and that's the budget that we will prepare. At sometime in the intervening period between now and December, if you choose to issue some other guidance, we will prepare the documents and whatever you need from us to help you achieve whatever it is that you want to achieve, that's our goal to work with you, and that's how the process is supposed to work, even though it clearly doesn't say that in charter, but that's clearly the intent, so if we're working together to get this budget passed, some sort of budget passed. So the big thing I wanna make sure that you understand, and I keep harping on this issue, uh, there are other cities that have, uh, have a flat increase in the budget, the city of Congrat one, the city of Nashville is up by two point two five percent, and I think Manchester's around a similar number. Uh, not that that means a whole lot to us, I know that people reference that, but their situation is different, we've got a thirty-four percent increase in costs that are uncontrolled, and that is that debt service, that debt service we've been planning for for a long time, and that happens next year, from 2020 to 2021, that thirty-four percent increase in debt service that must be paid and cannot be controlled in any way at this particular point, that ship to sail. Uh, we have no choice, we have to pay that. That will bring, that portion of our budget will be in a new plateau compared to where it is right now, and no matter what we do, that is gonna change dramatically, if we didn't spend money on a single capital project after that, it's gonna continue to be at that much higher rate for a while as those payments drop off. That, again, that would assume that we didn't do any capital projects, I'm not so sure that's feasible. Uh, I think that's the most important point you have to realize, it's not a typical budget year with increases, it's a very different year. With a three percent increase that has been proposed and planned for, for a very long time, that's to help get us to bring in sufficient revenues for 2020, 2021, and originally for 2022 at that rate, to get us to that plateau, to bring enough revenues to meet that debt service payment demand and the operating budgets. It was also planned that for 2021 and 22, that they were gonna be very lean budget years, because again, the debt service eats up a much larger piece of the budget than it did before. In order to even get a three percent increase in taxes, that means the budgets have to be flat, other than the statutory requirements in terms of the CBAs, those salary increases, health insurance were projected to be about ten percent, because that's part of the CBAs, uh, and also we have our ERP program, our finance software program that will not be serviced, we have to replace that. In order to do that, we have to budget for that 21 for it to take effect in 22, uh, January of 2022, it takes that long to research that, purchase that, train people, and get that loaded up and running, make that effective. So I just wanna make sure that the council understands where we are, even with a three percent, how dramatic that is. The other piece of that, because this budget is, is dealing with that, uh, debt service issue, whatever we do in 2021 affects 2022, and I showed you by the chart that's listed in there, and you have to remember how much unsigned fund balance we are using, and there will be scarcely any right now, we're projecting to use three point three five million doll, three point three million dollars in 2022 of unsigned fund balance. Once that's over with, that'll bring us to the thirty percent that will be down to by the end of this year, if we use one point eight million dollars this year to offset the tax rate. That'll bring us down to nineteen percent, which is the bottom of the range, the range is nineteen to twenty-four, those are our reserves, and that follows the guidance by Gatsby and GFOA. There's a dramatic change in 2022 that will be at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's all have to offset the tax rate. If you look above the chart above, you can see what it's gonna take even to get to a seven percent tax rate increase, that still requires cuts of one point two million dollars if we go to zero in 2021. So I just, whatever we do in 21 has a compounding impact on 22, that can't be changed. Now, that assumes that we don't have any growth in the unsigned fund balance, hopefully we will, but if we have shortfalls in revenue this year, we'll have that much less money to be able to put towards unsigned fund balance, and if we have shortfalls in expenditures, that will not be able to go to unsigned fund balance, so we're planning on no carryover. Any carryover there is, obviously, could be used, but right now, we're not planning it, because we just, we certainly don't know what the situation is going to be, so we're handling it conservatively. We're also not planning on deep cuts, deep, uh, reductions in revenue that come in, there's no anticipation for that in these items, we simply don't know what they would be. If that is the case, there'd be even less money available on the unsigned fund balance. So I wanna make sure you, you understand the complexity of the situation and the consequences of whatever action we, we choose to take in the 21 budget, how it has a compounding impact on 22 and beyond. So what you, we had, what we had talked about is you wanted to see what your options were, which makes a whole lot of sense in terms of what the different rates would be, and I have those for 21, if it was a zero percent tax rate increase, how much would have to be, the budget would have to be reduced by, or a flatline budget would have to be reduced by. Half a percent, one percent, they're all listed right there for you. And again, 2022, they're, obviously, they're magnifying considerably, because we don't have the unsigned fund balance be able to use to offset any of that. There's a lot of caveats that I wrote in there, assumptions in there, and I wanna make sure that you understand this, so if you have a question format, it'd be good to explain any of those. Councils, there's a lot to unpack here, uh, so let's start it off. Let me kick it off then. Um, looked at this a fair amount, uh, with the city manager, uh, as I think I mentioned a meeting or two ago, there's so much up in the air now with regard to primarily the property tax bills due on July 1st, um, and where we're sort of gonna be sitting with that. We've gotten some good news tonight, um, with regard to the TIF district and with regard to other than property tax collections, uh, so far this year, that's all good news, uh, whether that is negated on July 1st by an issue with property taxes, we're just not gonna know until July 1st, so I think my recommendation, my personal feeling, uh, is today what it was a couple of meetings ago, which is, let's go with a three percent for now, see how we look after July 1, and if things look better than we thought they might look, and there's a reason to adjust it, and we can adjust it, but I do understand now, and it took me a while, because, because I'm certainly no economist, um, that what we do in 21 can have a dramatic impact on 22 and beyond, and that, uh, the expenses that we're going to have, uh, to take care of debt service are going to be there one way or the other, there, they just, there's nothing we can do about them, and we basically have to have a flat budget to take care of the debt service and still have a two and a half or three percent or thereabouts increase in taxes, so. Does anyone else have any comments on that?
I, I concur with that, uh, general view, um, you know, I think there's just so much uncertainty, you know, it's helpful to think about contingencies, uh, you know, unfortunately, um, you know, the, you know, uh, trying to- you know, trying to cut, you know, would be difficult. So I think we should try to stick with plan at this point and see what happens. Obviously, the biggest uncertainty is what Congress is going to do for state and local governments. I think that there's a growing realization, probably even in a majority of the US Senate, that and certainly amongst governors and mayors from both parties, that just not doing anything to help state local government that can't run at a deficit, unlike the federal government. We can't operate at a deficit. That there has to be some revenue support, revenue replacement support from the federal government. So we, I think we just really have to see how that pans out because towns and cities across the country, much, cities are much more dire straits than us are going to be looking at massive layoffs if Congress doesn't step up to the plate and help solve this problem. It'll make the, you know, private sector shutdown, you know, look minor if we start losing basic government functions.
I truly believe that a month from now, we're going to know a lot more, Councilor Perez.
So just to be clear, I mean, the window is just so short on this. And I think Council Beal used the word contingency, so we give the basic direction tonight to hold at the 3% that we previously agreed to. The manager's going to give directions to the department heads, they're going to start doing their work. If we see a shift in the revenue that's not favorable versus favorable from the set of tax bills that's going out, then there's the opportunity to shift course, you know, come up with, you know, alternative, you know, what another budget might look like. Is that when we talk about contingencies, what you're thinking about, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I would just be, if I were you, I wouldn't do anything, I wouldn't recommend a 3% increase right now. You just don't have enough numbers on that, I would just leave it alone. It's a lot, if it's wiser for you not to take a position if you don't have numbers yet. I have to produce something, I have to get a budget going, so it's on me to do that. I would just be cautious if I were you, and I wouldn't agree to a 3% right now until you know more numbers. I wouldn't go that far, I appreciate you doing that. And obviously my recommendation is to stay the course, but you should take the time to get the numbers before you put yourself in that position. That's what I would suggest.
Okay, I actually think I I'm not making a motion or giving that direction, but I'm here, I just want to make sure that that's the what, that that's the direction that we're going in, we're holding the course at 3%. What instructions are you going to give? The, that just made me want to ask this question, what are you going to tell the department heads?
So then their budget has to remain flat, no increases are going to be allowed except for the salary line. Well, they don't have the health insurance line, but the salary lines is the only thing they're going to be allowed to increase. So if they've got a contract for something that's going to go up in one line, they're going to have to make cuts in another line.
Okay.
So they're not allowed to increase the bottom line of their budget other than by the salary lines.
Okay.
So that, and that's going to be across the city, so it's not, it's not going to be a pretty year at all. It's not going to be comfortable here, that's for sure. And I expect we're going to be doing this in '21 too, because we, even with the increase in taxes, again, this has been planned for a long time, we knew this was going to be the case. We've got to make, we've got to make capacity for that huge increase in debt service. And that's, that's a lot, and the only way to do that is to have flatline budgets for two years, and that's going to be tough to do even with the percentage of increases that were proposed. I think you've heard that's the direction that the, that the department heads are going to get, which is basically flatline your budget. Other than salaries, other than salaries, yes.
Other than salaries?
Other than salary lines, because we have collective party agreements, those are going to go up by contract. So when we set this up, I'll send you a copy of this tomorrow.
Okay.
That you can see what it is. And then when you get adequate numbers, then you, you can do whatever your folks would like to do, and we'll take that guy and start working on that. I would just suggest before you put yourselves on the line, you just wait and see what those numbers come in as. And it's probably going to be another month, and the budgets won't be due until the end of July anyway. So I think we'd just be flailing at this point, and it doesn't make sense to me to flail. I think we get the, we get the department, in my opinion, we get the department heads going, and then a month from now, we're able to revisit this, hopefully it was some good news from Congress and with some more information on what we're going to see as far as property tax collections.
This is Councilor Hill, can I?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, thank you. So I agree certainly with the idea of contingency planning. I can understand that we're already looking at flat budgets just to be able to accommodate the debt service that's coming up. But I think it would be extremely tone deaf for the city council to be simply staying the course at a 3% increase in the tax rate when we're already hearing from people. Even before this economic crisis began, we were already hearing from people regularly that these sustained 3% increases were just too much. And that is probably the thing that we hear about the most as city councilors. We hear about property taxes and we hear about roads, quite honestly. Now, I understand there's a trade-off there, but I think we have to be very sensitive to the economic environment that we are in. So I can, I can support the idea of not making a a decision tonight on this issue since there's still so much uncertainty and there's more information to be gathered, but what I will say with absolute clarity is I cannot support a 3% increase based on the information that we presently have. I'll be delighted if property tax payments come in according to schedule. But that's not an indication of how people are going to be doing next year. Just because they can pay their property taxes this July, if things continue to, if this continues to be prolonged and businesses are closed down and people are living on unemployment and just draining all of their personal resources in six months, we may be, people may be in a very different position. So I don't know that the property tax collection rate in July is any particular indicator of what the property tax collection rate will be in December. So I strongly want to state for the record that I will not be able to support a 3% budget tax rate increase. And so, you know, I really hope that the contingency planning is going on so that if we do have to make course corrections, we're able to do so.
So bear in mind though, and I don't disagree with you, but bear in mind that if we were to artificially hold this to say 0%, that the next tax year, we could be looking at a 5% or 7% increase in taxes, even with massive layoffs. So I would, I could easily argue, and we don't have all the data yet, but we will, that people would, if they had the choice, they would go for stability over a period of years rather than going from a 0% increase to say a 7% increase. And we've seen that play out with modern sewer bills.
I would never advocate for that kind of instability, but I think we should be looking at contingencies like what does a 1.5, 1.5, 1.5 situation look like for the next three years? Or even a 2, 2, 2. But I don't think that, if, Councilor Beal earlier made the point that some people are predicting that it will be a decade of recovery. So we certainly have to be doing some long-term planning, but I don't think it's reasonable for us to lock into a decision we made last year under extremely different circumstances about what the tolerance for Lebanon taxpayers would be in terms of tax rate increases. It's one thing when the economy is humming along very, you know, in a very positive direction. The, it is absolutely reasonable for us to reconsider decisions we made given that the context we're now operating in is so different. And I just want to advocate for the taxpayers of Lebanon, who ultimately are the ones who are going to have to pay not just this bill, but the school property tax bill, the county tax bill. And it appears that people's resources are diminishing rapidly.
Well, I acknowledge that, and I would argue that we're all advocating for the taxpayers. But I think we also have to be realistic that absent massive layoffs, there may be no way to get to levels that are lower than we had projected several years ago. Now, I'm not saying that's not going to be the case, it may be. But I could also argue that if we were to put ourselves in a situation where we did massive layoffs and weren't able to provide city services, that might be antithetical to the economic growth that we will need to get out of this. Yes, Councilor Beal, then Councilor Heist.
I'd bring it up too.
Councilor Prentice.
I've spoken once, I'll yield to you and come back later, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to make the observation that this discussion kind of points to the problem with the property tax system in New Hampshire. Which is it's not connected to ability to pay, so when people lose their job, suddenly, you know, the property tax burden is a really big thing. And we hear from them, and we should. But the reality is, hopefully, hopefully, hopefully a majority of the residents in this city will continue to be employed. And maybe most of the people who will continue to be employed can afford a 3% increase. So I think that's the difficulty, is whether there's a 3% increase or a 3% decrease isn't going to help people who have exhausted their savings and are not earning what they were earning a year ago. They're not going to be able to pay their property taxes no matter what. And, and, you know, I know we can't solve this at the city council level, but I just think we need to recognize that and, you know, simultaneously work at the state level so that we can have a system of property tax relief for when people, you know, lose their jobs through no fault of their own, for instance. So, you know, I, you know, I think we should just allow the manager to proceed as planned and continue to, you know, take in information to figure out, you know, the decisions we have to make going ahead. But, but I'm not going to prejudge it either way because I think there's a lot of trade-offs in both directions. And we need to figure out a way that people can afford to pay, who want to see city services preserved can do so, and how we can give relief to those who need it.
Councilor Perez.
I think Councilor Heist, and then I'll go since I spoke once.
Councilor Heist.
I wanted to give a little bit of a positive spin that I see the team that is running Lebanon, be it the council, DPW, Planning Department, you name it. Everybody's out here on the same team and we're all watching and looking at the same problems, and none of us really have the answers. But I have the faith in our department heads that they are not blind to the problem which we're all facing. And that they're going to find ways within their budget that hopefully they can cut back on a fleet replacement item, do something which doesn't require outside planners to come in and do another plan which may sit on the shelf for a while. I think that the department heads know where we're at and know what's going on. There was a time when we had need within the city to a point, or the town at that point, so that we built buildings and there was a trench in camp and down past Alice Peck Day Hospital. And people, families lived there for two and three and four years while they got enough together to actually get themselves back on their feet again. We're not going to be in that position, but it's not the first time the town has had a need. And I look forward to our department heads to be the leaders really, following Sean and saying, we can do this and here's how we can cut the budget down and make it more workable for everybody that's here. So department heads, I got faith in you, so go for it.
Thank you, Councilor Prentice and Councilor Heist.
Geez, well said, Councilor Heist. So I know I'm like a chickener, I'm doing this like chicken or egg thing, so we're starting off, you're giving direction for flat, for zero. To your department heads, correct?
Yes, other than the salary line, yes.
Okay. And then we have this chart that says here at the different percentage rates is what it could look like and the connection to 2021, you know, which is, which is essential in this. And it doesn't mean that we can't find ourselves someplace in between 3% and zero based on some more data coming in, correct?
Yeah, for example, right, maybe there's more fund balance that we actually get. Maybe the tax rate, the inventory of assets properties goes up. Yeah, there's a whole lot of factors that can change that over time, absolutely, yeah.
All right, good, thank you. And then lastly, I think we all got an email from a Lauren Whitsley? Whitesley or Whitsley on May 20th, that basically, you know, asked us, said that she was disappointed in hearing that we might, you know, zero out the tax rate and pointed to some different, you know, activities and things in the city that, you know, she understands why we would do it, but really thinks that it's not in our best interests. And at the end just says, as a property owner and a loyal voter, I urge you to support the current budgeted tax increase to maintain city services during this time of crisis. I know we're not voting on that, we're just discussing the global picture, but respectfully, Councilor Hill, you just reminded me, you said, you know, we do, we hear from people all the time who are like, you know, they are very tax concerned, as we all are, we wouldn't be sitting here, the impacts matter. But this is a constituent who wrote to us who was concerned that we might zero out. So yeah, that's, I just revisited that email while we were on the phone. Okay, so I'll hold tight, wait and see, do your job, keep us posted, thank you.
Councilor Heist, then Councilor Beal, and then I've got a comment.
All right, so I think that what we're doing tonight is just an exercise in good government, and this is what we should be doing all the time. Which is we're constantly evaluating the circumstances that present themselves to us. I think, though, we always want to make decisions based on the best available data, and there's no harm, no foul in waiting a little while to get more data to make the decisions that we need to make. And so I'm in support of kicking the can down the road for another couple of weeks while we get more data that will allow us to have effective government by evaluating the circumstances that are presenting themselves to us at this time. Thank you.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Just to clarify, because I think there might be a little confusion here. Manager Mahaland, when you say you're going to give direction to your staff, our staff for level funded budgets other than salaries and of course healthcare and, and of course debt service, that does not mean 0% increase in the tax rate, all other things being equal. That is, fits within the 3% trajectory that was contemplated from years past. The path we've sort of been on to bridge this sort of rapid rise in the, in the debt service payments related to the 60, 70 million dollar CSO projects that have been going on for the past decade. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly, in order to get, to be able to stay at a 3%, I have to have a flatline budget, that's what I have to do. And I have to use that amount of signed fund balance that you saw, like based on the numbers that we have today. Right, it's not going to be a particularly pretty budget, but hopefully I would, under that, under that model, I wouldn't have to lay anybody off. That's, I guess, the only best news that comes along with that. But it doesn't allow them to do anything else that's new either. I want to reiterate before I come to you again, Councilor Prentice, that the budget we're talking about here is the city budget. And I don't have to tell any of you, but I want to reiterate it for the audience if nothing else, that our budget is a portion of the overall tax rate, right? The school district is much larger than we are, then you add the county on to that. And we have to pay those bills regardless of what happens. So if we have to cut our budget to pay them, that's what we have to do. So to some extent, we are also relying upon entities that we cannot control. The county and the school district, both of whom have and the school district, both of whom have to be paid. If they choose to not do anything with their budgets, if they choose to increase their budgets, we still have to pay that, and we're only a piece of the pie. But because we have to pay that, if we bring the whole rate down, then a bigger piece of it is coming out of city government than is out of the other two. And I think that's, if anything, that's an impetus to make sure that we're keeping track of the school district and county budgets to the extent we can and understanding them. Yes, go ahead. I just want to be clear, I want to say that Council Hill, the council member actually voted for a financial management plan. Each year you pass a budget, and you do things that are, that are contrary to that plan. I just want to, you legally haven't gone and done that and said, "For the next 10 years, this is what the tax rate is going to be." You haven't done that. I just want to make sure people understand that, and if you changed your mind, you wouldn't be going back on something you voted on in the past. We've been implementing the pieces of that each year as we're supposed to, but at no time did the council say, "Hey, in 2022, we're going to have this tax rate." So I just want to make sure that you don't think you've put yourselves in a position that's untenable, because you haven't done that. I just want to be clear about that. Thank you, Council Prentice, then Council Bronn.
Thank you, Mayor McComary. So Council Bilo, thank you for pointing that out and making that clarification. This has just been a little bit of a struggle because when, and City Manager Mahaland, you know, no offense, but when you say "flat line" to me, it is like you're saying, you know, zero. And that's why I keep going back to this, like, I keep coming back here, like, are we talking about zero? Are we talking about three? What are the directions that we're giving? And so please forgive me, I just think it's in the language, and so I'm being very, I don't know if it's literal about it, so apologies. Thank you, thank you, Council Bilo, for help, for getting that on the record, and for, it really helped me, because flat line to me is zoom across the board. So I've been kind of sort of picking on you to get at what these directions were, and we're all set now. Thank you very much.
Council Bronn.
And I think for everybody, that'll be helpful.
Council Bronn, then Council Sykes.
Yeah, you, Cliff, you forgot to mention there are those of us that don't work anymore, and we're on fixed incomes. And our incomes do not go up by 3% every year. I personally don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to hold out if we go up 3% a year. And I am not going to be able to support more than 2% this year.
Okay, Council Sykes.
Yeah, I have a question of the city manager. When will the property evaluation be complete, the new one, be completed?
It's September 1st, I'm calling the MS-1 floor, and they'll be right up to the last minute getting that done. That's our deadline by statute, and I set it up first.
Okay, because the reason I ask, county taxes are based on the assessed values of the 20, you know, the however many towns and cities we have in the, well, we only have one city, but however many towns and city we have in the county. So it seems that there won't, our contribution will change somewhat to the county government because our, we'll collect it more, you know, we'll have a higher assessed value anyways based on new properties coming in. But that's an important piece to be looking at for the following year then in our planning, is how that will affect our county taxes.
Yeah, that, I suspect we're going to get a bigger piece of the pie because we're going to revalue this year. Of course, the other communities would catch up, right, eventually, but we're going to probably take a bigger piece of that county budget pie, because we are the largest community and we're pro, I don't know if any others are doing a revalue this year or not, but we are going to take a big, most likely, we're going to take a bigger piece of that pie.
Yeah, so that's why I'm just, that's why I asked the question, and I want to make sure, it's not relevant necessarily for tonight, but for next year, we'll want to be aware of that.
Thank you, Council Sykes. Councils, any other discussion on this? Okay, during that, I think you hear that we would like you to proceed as planned, and we will be. Well, again, if you want to do that, you can, you don't have to do anything right up to the day you approve the budget in December. I would just understand, I would just, it's fairness to you, I've been careful, and I wouldn't do anything. Right now, it's all on me, I'm the one who's presenting a budget, and I would just, I would recommend that you, well, really, you don't do anything, but it's up to you, which you want to do. What we're saying is just proceed as you, as you suggested you were going to do, and that we will want to revisit these numbers a month from now, when we see what the Senate does, and when we see what happens with property tax collections. And I'm not saying, with due respect to what Council Hill was saying, that, that the July 1 collection rate is going to be reflective of what's going to be the case in December, or next year, or the year after that, but at least it gives us one more data. So my opinion is we stay tuned, we have a couple more data points a month from now, and that maybe allows us to hone in on things a little bit better.
We can revisit this again. Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager reports? Yes, a few items here. Just want to give you an update on some project status. 20 Spencer Street buildings, I think I've told you before, but not done, we're just dealing with one of the corners and the definition of urban feel that's found in that corner, and how it's going to be characterized. It's probably going to be another 90 days before DES gives us an answer on that, how it's going to be characterized, but we're getting that piece finalized. We had told you before that we thought we might be coming back in April with a development agreement with Braver and Company. That has taken a bit longer for a variety of different reasons. What we're working on presently is a tax credit allocation that allows for a 4% tax credit for the developer to develop housing, 40% of the housing would be within the range of 60% to 100% AMI, and 10% between 80 and 100% of the AMI, and the rest would be market rate. That's better than what we were looking at before with like 90 units, now we're looking at closer to 40 units that would be for what I call working class people being able to afford, and that seems that's the best I'm going to be able to do. I was hoping to do more, but it's better than what it was before, but when we're talking about 40 apartments or something along that alliance, it's, it's small compared to what the city really needs for working class people to have affordable place to live. So we were talking about 10% before. We were, so it's better, but it's, the staff we have hired, we're trying to get, we're trying to achieve, trying to address some of this housing issue, in that range for working class people, and so far, that's the best we've been able to do. So hopefully, if we get the details of that worked out, we'll be back in front of you to go over the details of that, get your permission to go forward on that, then we'll finalize the development agreement and get that back to you to sign. There's a 9% tax rate credit, but we would have to have plenty more approval before September 25th, and there's no way we can get that done that quickly. And I don't want to wait another year, the developers won't want to wait another year. And that would, wouldn't make a significant change really overall compared to what we're already proposing. So that's, that's the process outlined for that. And any questions about that before I move on? I guess not. Okay. City Hall renovation status, they're working on a smaller crew because they want to keep the separation over there. The rules have changed in Vermont for Vermont contractors, which most of the contractors are, so we've been able to operate at the normal pace for the renovation process over there. So right now, we're looking at, they will be done construction the end of October, we're planning on moving in the week of November 9th through 13th, with of course, Wednesday is that of the 11th, it's Veterans Day, we will not be working on that day, but those other days of that week, I plan is to move in and for City Hall to be operational and open for business on the 16th of November. That's the present plan until something changes it. So that's where I agree with that. And you want to talk about our intention as far as open to the public, interact with city employees, I'm waiting to tell that. That's my plan is to, right now, the target date is for the building to be actually open, a public building will be open before the general public, would be that tick of a day. But that all depends on, there's been this discussion about vaccine by the fall remains to be seen. But the facility, the construction of the facilities will allow this glass, which is, screens out the issues of aerosol droplets, and allows for mixed state for operation, we have presently downstairs, as well as the public. Right now, I'm getting, originally, there was no plans to put, to do anything with the bathrooms, but I think I can get reimbursed for touchless fixtures, so I'm going to try to pursue that, we can price on that right now, and that would reduce significantly the risk to the general public and employees who are going in and using those facilities. They won't have to touch the toilet, obviously, the sinks, or the, you know, they wouldn't have to keep the paper towel dispensers, whatever we put in there, whether we use the blowers or whatever. So I'm working on that, which was not originally planned, but if that can be funded by curious act money, then I'll pursue that. I really didn't want to touch the bathrooms until we can do the walls, because those are cold walls and the windows in there. But the world isn't perfect, and if I can get the funds to at least replace the fixtures, I'm going to pursue that to get that done. So that's, that's the plan moving forward on that. Fireworks display, we're still working on the issue during this mission to the FAA on that, but optimistic we're going to get through those, but I'll give you further updates on that. Everybody else has canceled their fireworks at every point of the compass anywhere near us, so this could be a very large event, bringing in people to, to enjoy the fireworks in our city, but we're the only folks that actually have space and wants to do that. What's more, your updates? I have had a communication back and forth with DOT. They want to go through the bid on July 28th for the demolition. I asked specifically about whether the funds have been released to DOT for this project, and I got less than a clear answer, I'll just leave it at that. But they are moving forward on the cultural resources piece, and they asked if we wanted to participate in, and I said yes. And I reached out to Frank Hinge and Ron Welch, as well as Kurt Jakes, because he has been trusted in that as well. So we need to take video of the demolition of the structure and also preserve whatever materials we can from that, and put them on the respective websites, and work through that process. I said we want to be an equal participant in that, so they're going to allow us to do that. Yeah, I think that's the latest on that. They also asked, DOT asked what we wanted to do at the site, and I told them, there have been no definitive decisions on what we'd like to do, but a lot of the talk has been around park, and that discussion's been going on for quite some time, the string of pearls concept that was put out by Rotary, working with the city some time ago, as well as possibly a ball field, we're enduring a ball field space. So that's what I related, but I said no decisions have been made by the council at this point, so, you know, that has to, once we get the buildings knocked down, and we can proceed, you know, we'll have some better answers for them on that. So is it good news? I would say yes, but I'm cautious about that. They are moving through the process, as the governor said, they work on all their projects, but he didn't, he didn't give me an answer. He said, "We're going to be operating as if the money has been released," that's the term that he, that's the phrase that he used, but he wouldn't confirm or deny whether or not those funds have been released to DOT to proceed for the project. So we'll have to wait a few more weeks yet to see. They were still throughout the bid in April, obviously, that didn't happen. So we'll see what happens there. Packet Bridge Project is complete, they finished their work down there, tunnel continues to progress, they're working their way across the mall, that's still on schedule. Mechanic Street, I don't remember if I related this the last time or not. At the bottom of the hill down here where the bridge was reconstructed last year, they just painted new lines down there, we're going to grind from the edge of that all the way to exit 19, we're going to grind the pavement, and we're going to repaint all of that, an entire distance. Down by Maple Leaf there, Maple, yeah, Maple, whatever, Maple Fields, Maple Fields, that's what it is. It's pretty rough down there, as I'm sure you've all driven through and seen, that's going to get addressed, that piece of that work down there is part of that. And that's all part of CSO 11 work, it should be done by the end of July, just in case you get questions from constituents about that. They did some water work, I did some plating spots there, that had cut across the pavement, that's what that's all about, and anticipation of that project. Another good piece of good news, Sewer Line Project, the price came in at less than half the amount of money that we anticipated, we budgeted, prices have come down considerably. I suspect that's probably due to other projects that have been canceled, so that came in a lot less, which means we're going to be able to do a lot more of that work between now and the end of the year in terms of relining those sewer, sewer lines. So this is a good piece of good. And again, when the rare moments happen, I'm allowed to do that, I like to pass that information on. And that's all I have unless you have more questions for me. Yes, Council Sykes?
I haven't been down on 12A in quite a while because I've been doing this staying-at-home mostly thing. I got some questions about the taking out the middle turn lane on 12A. I presume only because...
As did I.
What?
As did I.
Yeah.
And we have a resolution, it's going back in.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I have the same questions. We haven't done the final striping yet, it's going back in.
Yeah, that's, I just want to confirm that, that was my assumption, but before I walk back to the constituent, I didn't want to get ahead of myself. Okay.
We're paving the final code next week, which will cover over the temporary lines that are there, and then they'll re-strike that after that.
That, I was almost certain that's what was going on, but it's better to hear it from the manager himself.
I thought you said horse of mouth.
You got to risk your life. No, no, I would never, I would never. To the liquor store.
Okay, if we have nothing else, I mean, the last thing on my agenda is to wish Council Sykes a happy birthday. He is 59 again officially, and we hope to wish you 59th birthday again next year, Council Sykes.
I'm okay with that, the real one is not so encouraging.
Okay. And I think Council Bronn...
That's like that with George.
Oh, that's good to know, really, that's good to know.
It'll keep, it'll keep going, but have a happy birthday anyway.
I think Council Bronn is moving adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, Council Prentice, seconds? Okay, let's take a roll call vote.
Heistin A.
Council Heistin.
Hey.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Heistin.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Bronn.
Bronn votes yes.
Council Zook.
Zook votes yes.
Assistant Mayor Bilo.
Bilo votes yes.
And Mayor McComary votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks, we'll see you soon.